Good evening and welcome to the January 11th, 2022 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance and also say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing during our invocation given by Board Member Jones.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for this day that you have given us and we thank you for the opportunity to honor and to celebrate our students tonight and all of their gifts and talents that they have. Lord, we ask for your guidance as we navigate tough conversations and subjects tonight and know that as leaders in this district and in this community that we are modeling for our students to way to handle controversy and to way to come together with compromise and resolve. And Lord, we ask that you be with Motzinger, Elizabeth Motzinger, Board Member Motzinger, and her family and her kids as they are dealing with the loss of her beloved husband. Lord, be with everyone with us this evening. Keep us safe as we return home. In your name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to take a moment to recognize and honor Board Member Elizabeth Motzinger's husband, John, who passed away last week from Parkinson's disease. John was a fervent supporter of public education. He shared Elizabeth's passion in championing our educators and students in this district. John was laser focused on helping to lift our community up through such efforts as the Freedom School. We thank John for all that he has done in his life to better our community. Our thoughts and prayers go out to Elizabeth and her family during this very difficult time. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. Motion passes. Our next order of business is our special recognitions. We would like first and foremost for Andy Kraft will come and help to recognize the Honors Course students.
Chair Kaplan, can we just make sure that they're coming forward that if parents, that there's someone who's in here making sure that they could be in the room to take photographs of their students?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Distinguished Board, Chair Kaplan, Superintendent McManus. My name is Andrew Kraft, Director of Arts Education, and this is Mr. Mark Pilson, our K-12 Lead Music Teacher. On behalf of the Arts Education Department with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, we are pleased to recognize the following individuals for their selection into the highly distinguished North Carolina Honors Course for High School and Elementary School. The following students were selected out of hundreds of recorded auditions that were submitted virtually last spring. The elementary honors course performance was canceled. However, the North Carolina Music Educators Association plans to offer accepted students the opportunity to participate in a virtual choir recording of the commissioned piece, "How Sweet the Sound" by Nathan Howell. The North Carolina Honors Course performance took place last November at the NCEA In-Service Professional Development Conference here in Winston-Salem. The middle school honors course was canceled before students could audition, which is why we don't have any with us tonight. But now to recognize our WSFCS Honors Core students. First, Claire Adams, Sherwood Forest Elementary, Teacher Mary Epperson. Next, Lenora Blaylock, Robert B. Glenn High School, Teacher Carol Earnhardt. Next is Erica Kleiner, Robert B. Glenn High School, Teacher Carol Earnhardt. Next, Clark Copeland, Meadowlock Elementary, Teacher Janaye Copeland. Tyler Pontz, RJ Reynolds High School, Director Joshua Settlemeyer. And Tyler was not able to be with us tonight, but let's go ahead and give him a round of Connor Romney, RJ Reynolds High School, Director Joshua Settlemeyer. And last, Reagan Rhimes, East Forsyth High School, Director Roman Brady. And let's give these students one more big round of applause. Thank you.
Next, John Sullivan will honor the West Cheerleaders with the NCHSSA State Championship.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Ms. McManus, members of the board. Thanks for having us here to recognize our state champions for the state of North Carolina. First, I'd like to recognize and thank the school administrators present from West Forsyth. With us tonight is Assistant Principal Rhonda Powell. Secondly, I'd like to recognize the cheer coaches from West Forsyth and all the work that they do for our athletes. I know the hours are long, but your passion and your attention to these athletes makes a difference. And here with us tonight are the 2021 Division One Varsity in the inaugural Cheerleading Invitational, West Forsyth Titans, your back-to-back state champions. And now Coach Harper will say a few words and introduce the team.
Thank you all very much for this. We are very excited and very thankful to be here. I'm going to introduce these young ladies, and if any of our Titan families, parents are here, please feel free to stand as we say your athlete's name. So first off, starting right here, we have Ally Hodges, McKenna Singer, Sophia Bergen, Hallie Jo Shelton, Alexandra Parker, Olivia Doscher, Isabel Franzaglio, Tegan Downing, Alexis Gallagher, Sarah Turner, Brianna Myers, Avery Strickland, Audrey Caudle, China Allen, and Hannah Bovender. And I definitely want to recognize again a special shout out to Mrs. Powell, our Assistant Principal and our biggest supporter. She does a lot for us at West Forsyth, and we really do value her.
Thank you so much. That's great. Next, Dr. Pratt will talk about the state of North Carolina's outstanding high school graduation rates, recognition to Atkins High School, Early and Middle College.
Good evening. I have the opportunity or the pleasure to introduce or recognize two of our high schools or three of our high schools within the district for our outstanding graduation rate. First High School is Atkins Academic and Technology High School. Dr. Nichols is the principal there. They have a 100% graduation rate. Our second and third school is the Early and Middle College at Forsyth Tech. The Middle College has a 97.2 graduation rate, and the Early College has a 100% graduation. The principal there is Joey Yell, and Amber's here to accept it on behalf of the Early
Outstanding. Next, Society for Classical Studies, 2021 Excellence in Teaching Award, K-12 Latin, Leslie Baldwin will introduce Reagan High School.
Chairwoman Kaplan, members of the board, Ms. McManus, I'm very pleased to be here tonight to recognize an excellent teacher, and Julie Puckett, Assistant Principal at Reagan High School, is here to represent the school as Jesse Kraft is the Latin teacher at Reagan High School. He is a 2021 recipient of the Society for Classical Studies Award for Excellence in Teaching at the K-12 level. Founded in 1869, the Society for Classical Studies is the principal learned society in North America for the study of ancient Greek and Roman languages, literatures, and cultures. Among other things, the recipient of this award must show a commitment to their classroom in their classroom to diversity, equity, and inclusion, evidence of improved student learning, innovative and creative classroom activities and assessments, evidence of a successful program, student successes and recognitions, professional service, and professional development. Having worked with Jesse for the past several years, I can attest that he meets all of these qualifications and more. He is a teacher leader in our district. He has helped to write district assessments and curriculum and has led a district-level Latin PLT for several years. He's received other awards, grants, and he even published an article in his second year of teaching. He's a very creative teacher and makes Latin engaging for his students. One example of his innovation is the use of Minecraft for education to help his students understand and apply principles of Roman architecture. Jesse attended the virtual SES Annual Meeting last week and received his award at that time. Our students are very lucky to have Jesse Kraft as their teacher, and we are lucky
Thank you so much. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items. The instructions for this section were on the sheet as you signed up. The most important rule to remember is that we ask that you be kind and respectful and know that we cannot talk about sensitive or private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have two minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. Thank you. First, we have Val Young.
Hello, Board Chair Kaplan, Board Members, and Ms. McManus. My name is Val Young. I'm president of the Forsyth County Association of Educators. For decades, our education team has lived in the hope that the powers that be will see us, acknowledge us, and compensate us for the long hours that we spend tending to the needs of our students, our families, enduring disrespect by individuals, and working in this pandemic, not just double time, but sometimes three and four times the job load that we've done before. We've been having trainings upon trainings, no planning time covering classes, and so much more. The promise came in December and turned into disappointment in January. Because we are human, we do make mistakes. But some of those mistakes are small and some are large. When we make a mistake, there are several things we need to do. We need to acknowledge the mistake, we need to apologize, and we need to make up for that mistake. The promise must be fulfilled so that we can all move forward. We await the fulfillment of the promise.
So I'm going to call the next three speakers. The next is Rhonda Mays, and then Aljabar, and then Donna Chandler.
Good evening, Chairwoman Kaplan, the Board, and Superintendent McManus. I wanted to address two different issues this evening. One is the mask mandate. Please continue to mandate that we have masks worn in our buildings. It is about safety. We don't know how much it is helping, but I don't want to find out how much it's helping. Okay? That was the first issue. The second issue is the supplement. First and foremost, I want to extend the same grace I want to extend it to me when I make a mistake. I'm going to give you grace. But the other part of that is, now what do we do? As what was already said by Val Young, President Forsyth County Association of Educators, we need to now correct that. One of the things that we need to see is a side-by-side, I think, evaluation of what was promised in December and what you're going to actually do. So we can see just how much of a shortfall it is per person, not so much when we look at that big number. But how does that impact your individual employees here in this district? We need to be able to retain and attract educators to this district. We can't do that if we can't compete with the other districts around us. So we need to make certain we have a supplement that is competitive, and therefore we can retain the people we have, recruit more qualified people to come to our district, and continue to educate our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Jabar?
Good evening, Board Leader Kaplan.
Good evening.
Superintendent McManus, and our Distinguished Board. First of all, please keep the mask on. I'll leave it right there. Secondly, I want to thank everybody who came out, who take care of our kids. Thank you for coming out today. The word grace was used earlier. I'm going to use a word called mercy. And mercy suits this situation. Making a mistake and rectifying a mistake makes everything better. I thank the superintendent for stepping out in the front and admitting there was a problem. Sometimes when something happens, we have a tendency to excuse or make it off on someone else. I've heard some things in our community that I didn't like. Sometimes when we make mistakes, people want to see heads rolled. But this is not a head-rolling situation. As you ask for mercy in your situations, you must be willing to extend mercy in other situations. I pray that this evening, that you have came with a plan that will make the hardest working people in our county feel like they are valiant.
Good evening to all. I'm Donna Chandler. I'm a former first-grade teacher at Campbell Farm Elementary. I love teaching. There's nothing in the world I'd rather do. The school system is like a cargo of ship with precious cargo, and the cargo is tended by teachers. The ship, of course, has a helm, and unfortunately, the helm is too often controlled by prevailing winds that are political winds. Each change brings new ideas, new directions, new training, but most of all, new paperwork. And it's extremely frustrating for teachers because many of the new ideas are old ideas repackaged and renamed, but someone gets paid for that. We have new acronyms to learn. We have to start from scratch to make sure our lingo is current, and someone gets paid for that lingo. There are a wide variety of responsibilities which increase each year, and as the responsibilities and expectations increase, the helm reduces the amount of time that we have to complete our jobs. Currently, some of us have less than three hours a week to plan. We have days with literally no breaks, no lunch break. And now you don't specify the number of hours within our day, so we are expected to work until the job gets done, and the job never gets done because we have precious cargo. So we work unpaid nights and weekends to keep up with demands, and we ignore our own precious cargo in order to do that. And the longer that you are committed to this passion for your life, this passion of teaching, your increase in salary gets smaller and smaller until one day there is none, and you find yourself where I am, standing on a plank of that ship, waiting your turn to jump off. Or you're a younger teacher who's looking for that ship called Indeed for a new way to make a living where the demands aren't so bad. I urge you to listen to your teachers, to know that we too need to get paid because we have and we care for precious cargo, and we are precious cargo.
Next, we have Nicole Walters, Michelle Jordan, and Brooke Stone.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Nicole Walters, and I am a third-grade teacher. These last few months, I have been carrying a weight, a weight that has kept me up at night. Did I make a mistake choosing to be a teacher? It's been four years since I've uprooted my life from Connecticut to North Carolina and left family and close friends behind me. Since year one of teaching here, I've been hoping for a change in the way society values teachers, a change in which we are compensated for the tireless hours we work and sacrifices that we make. When I heard that there was going to be a significant raise, I felt some of that weight lift. Finally, we are recognizing and valuing the work teachers are doing. I felt appreciated. I felt I could scale back on my second job and enjoy my time on the weekends with family and friends. But then we got that call about the $16 million error. That weight fell back on me, and every bit of faith I had in this district was crushed. So now I'm asking you, convince me. Convince me that a single individual can thrive off a teacher's salary and one day own a house. Convince me that one day our teachers will only have to work one job to make ends meet. Convince me that every educator standing behind me and working at home right now until the late hours of night are valued. Convince us that we can trust you and for you to keep your promise of an equitable salary. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michelle?
Good evening, Board Members and Ms. McManus. Our profession is dying. Here, let me say that again. Our profession is dying. Look in the paper, and you will see Pennsylvania, where there was less than 7,000 teachers graduated in the entire state. Oklahoma's shutting down their teacher ed programs. And North Carolina, right here in Winston-Salem State, I know for the last decade, we've even been talking about how they've been struggling with their programs. We need to do something to attract our teachers, and it's not just our first-year teachers. Do they deserve to have equitable pay? Absolutely. But we need to look at our veterans. Like Nicole, when that phone call came in, I finally felt like maybe I could pay off some of my medical bills. As you guys know, that we have been dealing with cancer and things in my family, and that was something that was going to really look for my family to be something that I could get my credit bill back up and really, at the age of almost 50, be able to get back to it. But now I'm looking at, what am I going to do? Two years from now, I'm able to retire, and unless something changes, you better believe it. When I hit 50 and I have my 20 years here in North Carolina, I will be leaving to find something else to do so that I can actually look to my later years in life and have money to survive off of, because as of right now, that's not going to happen. So I need you to do something for us veteran teachers, and I need you to also look at what you're going to do for your classified staff, because we all deserve to have a living wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke Stone?
Hey, y'all. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Brooke Stone, and I've been teaching in this county for eight years. I was also a student in this county, and I too work three jobs to make all the things happen. $16 million is a very small percentage of our overall budget, unless I am mistaken, which, as we all know, can happen. The adopted budget is over $588 million, and the total cost that we're missing from our supplement is $16 million. That means talking about less than 3% of the overall budget, and in my humble opinion, the other 97% of this budget can take that hit. We need good educators. This money would have meant keeping good educators and good teachers in our profession and attracting more to Forsyth County. You guys know as well as I do that we can't afford to lose any more than we have. My students, some of which you saw up here tonight, buy into my classroom because they trust that I have their best interests at heart. If I lose their trust, I lose them. So when I strip in my classroom, which happens? I own it, and I make it right. You've lost our trust. You've owned up to that, and I really appreciate owning up to the mistake. The next step is making it right, and that can go a long way to build back our trust. Because if I can't trust you to do what you say with my money, then what can I trust you to do? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Fallujah Day, Scott Chapman, Lee Childress, and Jill Evans.
You did very well. Thank you very much. Greetings, Board, and Village, and Superintendent McManus. I left Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools as a permanent teacher at Parkland High School. I was an EC teacher there in 2019, right before they took away the case managers. I knew it was coming. I left because of the crazy workload, you know, various things that people have already spoken about, and EC teachers go through a lot. There were times where I was taking on regular, you know, general education classes because there was no more teacher. The teacher left in between, so I was the one there. It was overstressed to the point of medical stress. Got a doctor's note, still had to do IEPs while I was out sick. So it came to a point where it was like, no, can't do that. I love teaching. When I left the school system, I went fully into full-time employment, sorry, self-employment as an educational consultant, business consultant. I'm also an artist. I'm also a minister, and I want to stand before you as a person of faith and say, please honor us as a village and us as life developers. What we do matters for our present and our future. We are human beings first. Nobody should be diving into all these demands and everything, whether to students nor to the staff, because we'll all fall apart, and we're jacking up our own future. So I'm pleading with all of you, you do, we, we, we do have this money. It's here, okay? Let's do it. God bless you.
Thank you. Lee Childress?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to say I agree with my colleagues today. This has been crazy, crazy, crazy couple days. So my question is, what is the district, what is the district, are you going to do for us? I'm aware that most of our funding comes from national and state resources. I understand that. But this local bump was that silver lining in this dark cloud. We have been in for two years. More importantly, our vacancies are so high right now. This bump would help convince, and it did help, I spoke to people to convince folks to stay. Give it a shot. We need you. This district needs you. These students need you. Sorry, this is crazy. This is a couple thousand dollar mistake. I understand no one is perfect. I do. I support our superintendent. Overall, she's done a good job. She comes into our schools, she has her folks come into our schools, and I support her. But we got to do something and get this right, y'all. We have got to make this right. People were refinancing, starting to refinance homes. Now they don't have that option, and they're calling me, and I don't know what to tell them. We got to do right. We got to do right for our classified people. We have to stand together, and we need your support. Look at any and all options, see what you can do. Please, please, please make this right. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Evans?
Okay, I must steal a line from you. Hey, y'all. Before I start, I just want you to know that I have a daughter who's a sophomore at Appalachian State, and it's because of a teacher sitting right back there. That teacher sitting right back there, Julie Striplin, is why my daughter is wanting to be a teacher, even though everybody's tried to talk her out of it. I am not a numbers person, so I'm going to let those people speak that foreign language because I don't speak it. But most of us were probably taught at a young age to do what we were going to do. We've got to do what we say we're going to do. We honor our word. What happens when we don't honor our word? We lose trust, and trust has been mentioned a couple of times. We lose trust. Lots of relationships have been broken because of a loss of trust, and it was never gained back. So with that said, y'all know what to do. You must honor the increase with the local supplement. Why? Because we trust you. We trust you. So please, don't lose the trust of all these people who work tirelessly to serve the students of this school system. We deserve it, and we deserve to be able to put our trust in you guys. So please, do what is right for the staff and the educators of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephanie Ingram, Alan Daniel, and Sarah Jacobson.
Good evening to all of you. I'm going to tell you a short little biography about me, hopefully to make a pretty strong point. I started my teaching career at Summit School on Renolda Road, and I very intentionally switched to public education because I believed that those kids did not need me. I had nothing that those people needed, but I felt like I could make an impact on kids in the public sector. My children went to public school. As I made the switch to public school, I started at Brunson, my own children got free and reduced lunch as a public educator. I have a master's degree, and my kids got free and reduced lunch. That's embarrassing. For 20 years, our state legislators have effectively undermined and delegitimized public education all across North Carolina, and every single teacher and classified person and custodian and front office lady, we put our faith in the school board of Forsyth County to smooth out that rough edge, smooth out that rough edge, because we know that our legislators in Raleigh don't like state employees, and they don't like public school, and they want us to quit. They want us to go to Summit. They want us to go to for-profit schools. That's what they want us to do. And we're all here going, come on, come on, come on, let's make this work. Let's believe in public ed. Let's do this thing. I've been working now for 17 years, 15 years, in the Forsyth County Schools. I've been told by my state legislators that after 14 years, I'm not going to get raised anymore. I'm maxed out. And I would be willing to bet that none of you in your professional jobs have been told that after 14 years, you've hit the top. I would be willing to bet that none, none of these security guards have been told, hey, after 14 years, man, you're topped out. None of these people with the media have been told, hey, after 14 years, you're done. And that's what we've been told, not by our state, but now by you guys. And it hurts.
Thank you. Alan Daniel?
Good evening. I'm going to speak loud because I tried to listen to the board meeting, and I couldn't understand anything anybody here said. I request my teacher friends refrain for just a few minutes from throwing things until I finish what I got to say. I respectfully request, especially in the light of the events of the past six days, that this board refrain from approving any pay proposal tonight. There are two reasons. Just today, I learned that not only is the budget for Article 46 sales tax revenue 6.4 million dollars more than last year's amount, but the actual revenue for last year was 6.4 million dollars higher than the budget. On December the 10th, 2021, Forsyth County distributed that 6.4 million dollars plus 3.3 million dollars in non additional, non Article 6 sales tax revenue to Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. That money is not recurring, should not be used for anything other than, by agreement, certified supplement increases, not bonuses. I have already reviewed all available documents regarding the supplement increase and have seen no mention of that 9.7 million dollar windfall. Also, it seems a significant portion of the supplement increase is allocated to certified support personnel and assistant principals. When the proposal was presented to the voters, we were told it was for teacher raises. The stated reason for increasing support personnel pay is it's difficult to fill those positions. Wait, don't we have 250 classroom certified educator positions open in this district? Sounds like they're kind of hard to fill, too. I request the board use the next two weeks to do their due diligence to assure that any proposed schedule is accurate and appropriate. One more thing, in tonight's presentation, as posted online, there is a significant factual error. If that error is not corrected during the presentation, I will share it with you at the end of the meeting. In comments then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Next, we have Sarah Jacobson.
My name is Sarah Jacobson, and I'm a sophomore at Reynolds High School. I'm here to talk to you guys about a pressing matter today, our teachers. The issue isn't the teachers themselves, but the way you've treated them, not just this year, but for several years now. Now more than ever, the impact is being felt deeply in our schools. I know very few people at my school who haven't, who've had a consistent math teacher this year. Math is such an important subject, and yet, none of our students are having an adequate education in it. Um, sorry. It's not just the math teachers, though. Students like me are losing out on a quality education when more and more of our teachers leave. I don't blame them. Older, experienced teachers are quitting or retiring early, and there are younger teachers with a great fresh perspective on how to teach things, are leaving and taking other career paths because they are young enough to do so. I'm personally very lucky that I only have two and a half years left in the school. If I wanted to right now, I could just go online and learn the rest that I needed. But what about the kids that are younger? What about the kindergartners? What about the second graders that have their entire education in front of them? You all fought so hard to open our schools in person this year, yet for some of those students, these kids are going to school and finding nothing but a substitute teacher and a generic lesson plan. This is your chance. This is your chance to change things for our teachers, our students, and our district. Please give our teachers the respect and the pay they deserve. Thank you.
Sarah, thank you so much for coming before this board and speaking with us. I really appreciate that. Next, Laura Lester, and Jenny Easter, and Jennifer Lockhart.
I'm not going to talk about math tonight because I think tonight needs to be about the teachers. What I will mention is the budget, the Esser funds that were, that were given to the school for COVID relief, 200 and little over 214 million dollars were given to the school for COVID relief. 12 million of that was earmarked for SEL, and SEL is basically CRT rebranded. And so, my recommendation, let's take that 12 million dollars and give it to the teachers because that doesn't need to be in our school. And I have a teacher that has reached out to me that is concerned about what's going on in the classroom. She's having the training of the SEL, and everybody's focused on the training is the individual, individuality and the identity, the gender identity, the racial identity, the sexual orientation. I mean, what are we even doing in school? We need to get back to reading and writing and arithmetic, science, social studies. She's teaching about MLK in her classroom. One student knew anything about MLK. That is a failure. We need to get back to the basics and take that money that doesn't need to be spent on social, emotional learning coaches and training and gender studies and all of that and give it to the teachers. 12 million dollars, that can solve most of that problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Easter?
Good evening. Anyone who knows me knows I have a lot to say, but right now, honestly, I'm too tired to even spend energy to try to fit everything into the minute time we are allotted. But supplements, I'll simply say this, I trust our superintendent, Mrs. McManus, to work towards fixing this issue. She's probably the only superintendent in the last three that we've had since I've been an educator that has even attempted this much of a movement on the pay scale. Maybe a bit premature with this situation, but we can all agree she's done everything in her power to try and change things for the better in this district. I also wanted to speak up and say that I do not look for retribution in someone losing their job for this mistake. In some weird way, I feel my teacher sympathy coming out for the people in finance and payroll, only because I know that they are just as understaffed and rushed to make things happen too quickly, just like we are. This is exactly, this is exactly what I spoke about in March last year during COVID and in-person learning, how the constant last-minute changes result in things unchecked and situations that leave us educators in the lurch scrambling to do our best. I feel it necessary to also point out that this school board spends forever mulling over the most unimportant and trivial details and then rushes through to vote, where several members are asking, what did I just vote for? And it's the truth. I've sat for hours listening to this board meeting, get whiplash at the final decision, and then I ask some of you privately, what does that mean for us? And you say, I don't know. Meanwhile, teachers have to pivot any and all plans at a moment's notice on the daily, while being professional, cheerful, reassuring to students and parents, which is sadly more than I can say for the behavior I've witnessed from many members on this board. You all have made continuous decisions on, can I ask for a little bit?
Yes.
You've all made decisions on topics that you don't understand, medical, COVID, budgetary concerns, educational goals, and it blows my mind that many of you sit here making decisions about schools and educators and children when none of you, but maybe one, have any actual teaching experience. That is why I propose to you all tonight to institute two ex officio seats on this school board for two actively working educators, one certified, one certified and one classified. It is so tiring to have to be on alert, texting questions and concerns to certain board members, praying they will get our point across, when a representative, representative can just be up here to ask them for us. You need insight from not an admin, for once, but from someone who knows the struggles that come from your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Lockhart?
Hi, good evening. I'm Jennifer Lockhart. I teach second grade at Whittaker Elementary, and I'm just here as a teacher and a parent and a taxpayer to talk about a couple of things. First, just about the mask mandate. Please keep it. Please don't have a three-hour discussion about if a kid needs a mask, break, they're fine. I have a group of seven and eight-year-olds that can keep their masks on. We're all fine.
Five-year-olds, too.
Five-year-olds, too. So let's not worry. They're fine. They can do it. All right. I'm not worried about talking about how the math worked or who made the mistake. I love that I'm in a village of people of grace and mercy and forgiveness. I couldn't be prouder to be part of this group tonight. But we do have to figure out how we're going to show respect for the teaching profession, not just us, the whole profession. I've taught in other countries and other states. I have never been so wiped out as I have been in this state. I've never worked harder, had more minutiae, been more micromanaged, and made less money. And truthfully, I thought of resigning over Christmas. I thought, gee, this isn't what teaching is. I've been doing this for 30 years. This just doesn't feel right. I have no energy for my family. But then I heard about the raise. I'm like, oh, I can pull this out. Then the phone rang, and my husband heard it ring, and he goes, huh, they're going to take your raise back. And I go, be quiet. And you did. So I just, I know you didn't mean to, but it was like, really? And I just want to back up what Ms. Easter said. We need, if nothing else, a consultative board of teachers, an advisory committee. We can't keep making these financial decisions. I just received a charging card in my room that costs $700. I didn't need it. I have one. I'm going to keep going. I asked to give it back. I was not allowed to. I asked to let, give it to a colleague who needs two, because I only hold 10 computers, and I have 20 kids. I was not allowed to. So now it's a filing cabinet for me. And we have collaboration tables still. All right? Not allowed to give those. So all I'm asking for is, please listen to these wonderful people. Save your veteran teachers. Save us. We can't keep going. In the five years I've worked for this district, I'm now taking home less money than I did five years ago because I've made no raise, and my deductions are higher because of healthcare issues, benefits. So just, this will save the kids. This will save the kids. Save us, save the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope I pronounced this last name. Jeff Redbird Austin, Sam Ball, Louise Ellis, and David Bellata.
Madam Chair, you was way off on my last name.
Sorry. I didn't quite read it. Can you tell me?
I want to say greetings to Madam Chair, Superintendent of the School Board today, and the guests here. My name is Jeff Anstad, and I'm a mechanic with Department of Bus Transportation. Tell you a little bit about me. I'm a former vice chief of my tribe, the Hallowasiponian Tribe. I'm a former board member of the only Native American-owned charter school in the state of North Carolina, Hallowasiponian Charter School. I'm also a former Indian commissioner in the state of North Carolina, where I was chairman of the Environmental Justice Committee and a couple more, and I presently served on the DEQ Equity and Advisory Committee to the Secretary. I want to just bring a few things. We're talking about importance. Let me tell you what importance is. As a mechanic, we are the first. And I presently serve on the DEQ Equity and Advisory Committee to the Secretary. I want to just bring a few things. We're talking about importance. Let me tell you what importance is. As a mechanic, we are the first. We are the first to show up on scene. We get buses cranked, no matter how cold it is, how hot it is. We make sure that our drivers and our children are safe. And we're the last. We stay here till every bus is parked. Just want to make sure people understand that because, you know, a good friend of mine told me years ago, he said, son, he said, if you ain't on the agenda, you might be on the menu. I don't want to be on the menu no more. And that's what I feel like is happening here. As mechanics, we feel invisible. Do you think you guys got it hard? Come and get in my service truck with me for one day. For one day. We make barely what diesel mechanics are supposed to make. A few years ago, we had a gentleman come and they set down a salary comparison sheet. I never seen it.
I'll allow extra time.
Thank you, ma'am. I never seen it. I'm requesting a copy of the salary comparison sheet. Also, step raises. Why doesn't mechanics get step raises anymore? Also, it was said, I guess, three, four years ago that $7 million was missing from the transportation budget. What happened to that money? We didn't know anything. It didn't go to our paycheck. Those are just questions I have as a mechanic coming here. And somebody's got to stand up for these guys. You know, somebody's got to stand up. And lastly, on November 17, 2021, at a bus transportation mechanic meeting, I entertained a motion and it was properly made and properly second to have the Director of Transportation to advocate for transportation mechanics for a 5% salary increase that would be annually to the Human Resource Department and the Superintendent of Schools. And a report be submitted to mechanics in 30 days. If I seen that report, y'all seen that report. We would just ignore. Now, let me tell you what 5% will do. 5% on some of the lowest-paid mechanics would add $1,250 to his check a year. To some of the highest paid, it'd add $2,250 increase a year. We've got mechanics now that's leaving left and right. We've got seven to nine positions open. We're working, I'm covering the whole eastern section of Forsyth County in the evening time. I just want to thank you for your time and I'll open up opportunities, Superintendent. I love to sit down with you, School Board. I love to sit down with you. I know what you're going through, but just do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sam Ball?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members.
Good evening.
Superintendent McManus. My name is Sam Ball. I'm a sixth-grade math teacher at Pharaoh Hill Magnet Academy. This is my six-year teaching. I'm currently working on trying to get my master's degree in teaching and learning from Clemson University online, and I'm not going to be compensated for that. The workload is such that it is manageable with my teaching job, but it is also such that I cannot afford the time to do my job as a teacher well, get all of my coursework done, and work a second job. Accidents happen. I was in an accident back in December and we lost one of our vehicles. And now my wife and I are carpooling in a little two-seat pickup truck. I have to drop her off at Parkland two hours before she's supposed to be there because, you know, that's what we got to do right now. Bottom line is, I'm not going to get compensated for that master's degree. And part of the reason why, in fact, the main reason why I'm trying to get that master's degree is for my students. I believe they deserve the highest quality of education possible, and I need to be the best educator that I can be to give that kind of education to them. That said, I'm not going to get anything for it. I'm not going to get compensated for the thousands of dollars that I'm having to pay out of pocket to get this degree. I would have to go and get my National Board Certification, which is a whole different process. Not to mention the fact that the certified employees get paid much better than the classified employees in this district, and classified employees can't do that. $13 an hour minimum for classified employees. We've been trying to advocate for $15 minimum, which is the now state minimum for state employees except for school employees, education employees. That's not right. I believe in master's pay, but if I'm not going to be compensated for that, that supplement would have helped a lot. I'm not going to get as much as I wanted now, but look, I know you guys can't pay me for my master's degree, but if Raleigh's not going to do it, y'all can help. And if y'all aren't going to help, get Raleigh to change what they are doing. Thank you.
Louise Ellis. And then David Villada.
Good evening. I'm Louise Ellis. I am a fourth-grade teacher. I'm also a single mother of three, a single mother that has qualified for many assistance as my children came up. My children were in daycare. I qualified for daycare assistance. I'm currently now working two part-time jobs as well as a seasonal part-time job so I can give my children the things that they need. I also have to take the time out to go to food banks in between jobs so that we can make sure that we have enough food to last us throughout the month. I was looking forward to the increase. With the increase, it would allow me more time at home with my children. I was planning to quit one of my part-time jobs so that I could spend time with my children more. My daughter is a second grader at Sage Garden who's struggling to read, and I don't have the time, so. I feel bad as a parent that I have to spend so much time working to provide for them that I can't be there physically for them to be able to succeed in school. My son's a ninth grader at Glenn, and he's struggling as well with the transition into high school and making sure that he's doing his assignments as he's supposed to. And then I have an older son, he's 21. He still lives at home with me and he supports us at home financially. He wants to move out, and even with him moving out, he's like, Mom, I'm still going to give you money every week so that you can have. I should be doing that for him. I shouldn't be asking him for money. He should be asking me. But as an educator, it's not going to happen as I'm looking. So I hope that you guys think about everything that is being said tonight and consider our supplement increases because we need them so that we can continue to do what's best for our own children at home and for the students in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. David Villada?
Good afternoon, chairwoman.
Good afternoon.
Board members. Superintendent, and especially all the teachers and all the people and all the staff that we have here today. A lot of you guys already know me. If not, Dave Villada, founder and director of New Life New Aviva, an organization that just a little bit over a month came here and believed that for at least the last 15 years that I've been here in this city working and providing for the community, that there was hope. The community, the people, the village came out and told you guys how important it was that we was needed in our communities, in our schools. Now I'm here today to tell you that these teachers, this community, need you. They are the ones on the front line. They're the ones taking all the beating every day in schools with these kids and these individuals who I'm looking forward to work with and make their case load easier, make their safe schools. But I can't do it with the disbelief, with the broken hearts, with the problems at home that they have as well because of lack of funding. The money is there. You guys are the professionals. Admit that there was a problem. Don't point fingers. Don't make it bigger than it is. Make it right because the village is here, the village has spoken, and they're letting you know. I don't think what else I can say, what I can do to let you guys understand that nobody else by firing or this or that can make it right, but by you guys coming together and making this right, by giving these people the money that they deserve so that we can move on with hope, that this school system finally has a light at the end of the tunnel. And Superintendent McManus is here to make a change and to really set forward a motion that has been, been needed in our community and in our second homes that I told you guys before, that is our schools. When I grew up, my school was my second home and my teacher was my second parent. And the way that things are going on now, they take a crazy, crazy caseload, and this bit of money that was promised to them is highly needed. Come together, do what you do, and do right.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next order of business is the superintendent's update.
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't realize that while I was waiting for the next person, I didn't realize that was coming, coming so soon, but just a very quick update of a few items that are coming up. And so, go ahead. So as we know, we are about to start our exam season, and that starts this Thursday, January 13. It continues Friday and then into next week. So schedules are posted online, and just wanted again to reiterate that this is happening in our schools this week and next week. On the next slide, there are grants available right now through the Winston-Salem Foundation, and these are teacher grants, and they're for, for anyone actually in our school settings that are needing additional funds for some of the, the things they're creating within classrooms and throughout the school. Those deadlines for applications are Monday, January 31, and so we wanted to make sure we highlight that, and thank you to the Winston-Salem Foundation for their partnership. Just something else that's very exciting that we just, I just found about, about on Monday and I wanted to highlight here, and this is an entitlement grant that our Student Services staff received for, from the state for $431,000 to actually support our students. And you can see at the bottom what's very exciting about this. There are, it, the grant is designed to address the needs of our students that are homeless, currently homeless, and their families. And so you can see the three areas of the automobile supplies and supports, the clothing, the laundromat services. So this is a really exciting opportunity for our students, and thank you to Dr. Stokes and to Mrs. Thorpe over social work and just for, for applying for this grant and actually getting it on the first shot they applied for it, got it immediately. It's going to be great for our students, so thank you. Also, this past Saturday, the Community for Safe Schools were together with volunteers from around the community, actually creating what you see right there, that these, these air filtration systems that 70 of our teachers have actually asked to have in their classrooms. I want to thank the community members and folks that, there were staff members as well. That, that came out Saturday, and I can, I can tell you, I showed up to give support to say, hey, you guys are doing stuff for our classrooms. And I was, you know, they said, well, do you want to make one? I said, sure. Well, that was interesting. If you got mine, you're going to see a lot of tape on it, whoever gets mine, because I wanted it to look perfect. It literally took about an hour on my first one, so I didn't get too many accomplished, but I, I think it's awesome that community members come forth to try to, to help with the safety in our classrooms, and so I want to thank them. And last but not least, we know that January, I mean, January 17, Monday, is Martin Luther, Martin Luther King Junior Day, and it's a day that we are not in schools, but it's a day that I hope we will stop and remember someone that had such an impact on, on our, on, literally on our world, on our country, on our world, and continuously fought for the rights of all people. And, and I just wanted to point out that we are not off just for a day off. We are off for a very good reason, so just remind everyone of that. Thank you.
Our next order of business is the discussion items. First is a COVID-19 update and mask recommendation by Katie Key, our Director of School Nurses.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. So we'll just start here like we normally do with our numbers. This is from Forsyth County. Positive cases, this is from December 22 through January 5. That's a 31.8% positivity rate, and our community transmission level remains high. These are our Winston-Salem Forsyth County metrics for those 14 days. Our positive cases total were 450, and that's students and staff members. Close, total close contacts during that time were 469. This is our sports and performing arts data where we had done some mask optional for those that are actively participating or playing, and those, the performing arts and sports, we had 58 positives and 147 close contacts. We had a very busy couple of weeks. The CDC made changes and shortly after, our toolkit changed and then changed again and then changed again. So we have been working hard over the last couple of weeks trying to get all this information out to our COVID coordinators and to understand the guidance, meet with the Health Department to get their guidance for us. So one, so these are just the, some of the changes that they made. So for confirmed cases and close contact exclusions decreased from 10 to five days. That is followed by five additional days of strict mask wearing. Household contacts, they used to end up being 20, usually 20 days. Now they could be up to 15 days. This just all kind of depends on how many people are positive in the household, then if they start showing symptoms, and then those dates end up changing. Vaccination status could provide exemption from exclusion for exposed individuals. So if someone's fully vaccinated or they're eligible for a booster and they've had their booster and they've been exposed, then they, as long as they remain asymptomatic, they would not have to exclude from school or work. Individuals who are identified as a close contact would be exempt from exclusion if they've tested positive in the last 90 days and they are asymptomatic. This was in there before, and then when they changed initially, it was not in there, and then they added it back, so that's why I wanted to put it back in there. Last time we talked about, they had some options in there. There was a 10-day, there was a seven-day with a test, and that's not in there anymore. So there's no test that's required for those confirmed cases or close contacts before they come back to school or work. Mask wearing by both the confirmed case and the exposed person continues to provide exemption from exclusion for exposed individuals if they are asymptomatic, and that now includes sports and extracurricular activities as well. Testing in schools, I'm really excited about this. We have approximately 20 schools where either the COVID coord, it's usually the COVID coordinator, but sometimes it's been an AP or somebody else that's volunteered. They have volunteered to pilot this state testing program. So we're, we get our, it's a free testing program from the state. We get our test kits from there. And I trained about 15 to 20 people last week. They got all of their supplies and many of them started testing this week in schools, staff and students. And so I'm training a few more this week, and they should start testing as soon as they are able to learn the documentation system and they've been checked off. The Forsyth County Department of Public Health have contract staff, and they, several of them will be hired next week, or they will start next week and they'll start training. And so hopefully by the end of January, we'll have even more schools that have testing in them. So this will be for symptomatic students and staff. These are rapid antigen tests, and you can have results within 15 minutes. These are rapid antigen tests and you can have results within 15 minutes. We also have tests. I know there's a shortage in the community. A lot of times it's hard for people to get those rapid tests especially. And they're having to wait days for the PCR test. So we have School Health Alliance, school-based clinics. There's one at Mineral Springs Elementary and Middle. There's one at North Forsyth, Petree, and there's, there's another one. Um, there's one, there's a mobile that goes to that area. They also have tests. You just have to apply, you have to sign up to basically be their patient. But then once you do it one time, students can go there and that, that test is free. I'm going to let Lauren talk about this.
Good evening. Real quick, just wanted to give a little bit of an update on indoor air quality. We talked about this a little bit in B and G. But we have installed the bipolar ionization in all of our WSFCS facilities to help with indoor air quality. Ms. McManus and Darryl Walker earlier this evening talked about the Corsi Rosenthal boxes that the Community for Safer Schools built for 70 of our teachers to pilot in our schools to see how they like those and how those work in the classroom environment. Also wanted to remind the community and board members of the 28 million we allocated in ESER funds. The first year of projects to upgrade HVAC systems and add ERV systems into some of our gymnasiums and middle schools and elementary schools are underway. We have bid all those projects out for the design work. And so as soon as we get that process done, we will actually bid for the contractors and move forward and come back to you to approve those contracts. And we've also, excuse me, adding portable air scrubbers to our secondary level schools. These are large commercial units that will scrub the air in those large open areas. Our cafeterias mainly, that's an area that we hear a lot of concern about. It's an area where students are unmasked and in large groups while they're eating. And so we're adding an additional layer of support for those areas as well. I'll turn it back over to Katie.
Okay, so the mask, North Carolina DHHS continues to recommend schools continue to implement a universal space covering requirement if the school is in a county with high or substantial levels as defined by the CDC. And you saw before that we remain in a high level. Our cases have been increasing over the last 14 days. A mask mandate continues to be in effect for the city of Winston-Salem. And now strict mask wearing is required after a close contact or confirmed case returns back to school for five additional days. And those that were exempt, exempt, excuse me, from exclusion. So if they were fully vaccinated or they were both wearing masks, they are required to wear, to use strict mask wearing for 10 days from when their contact was. So that's, they'll, they'll be wearing masks, strict mask use and that's indoors except for when they're eating lunch. Any questions?
Board member James?
I just had, so we continue to, to receive, I think there's still sometimes miscommunication or we receive emails and we forward them to you and around the exclusion piece. And so if we're looking at the first where it says confirmed cases and close contact exclusions, and that's basically saying if you are fully vaccinated, is that right? So if you're fully vaccinated, then your, your time is decreased?
So if you're, if you were fully vaccinated or if you're 18 years and older and you're eligible for a booster and you have that booster, if you're asymptomatic, then you don't have to exclude at all.
And so I, I guess what I'm, I'm trying to understand is at this point now, does fully vaccinated in this language mean having, having the booster or no?
Yeah, technically the, when you have your first series, so one and two of Pfizer, then you're fully vaccinated. But with this guidance from the state, they recommend a booster after the age of 18. If it's been enough time from your last one, yeah. So if you're eligible for the booster, then you have to have it in order to be exempt from exclusion.
Okay, so if you're, if you, if, if the amount of time has lapsed and you, you can qualify in a safe way to take the booster, then that's what's required to be in the exclusion?
Yes.
Okay. And, and is that, has that been a change? Because that's, I mean,
The booster.
Is that, right, because we've, we've not really, the last time we talked about that, the, 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 requiring the booster, I don't remember.
Yeah, that was a change.
That, so the booster was a change?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so.
So I'm also hearing about universities dealing with this issue and they're having to recant on it because so many other students had COVID that they're now not eligible to get the booster because they've just had COVID. And they're supposed to wait a certain amount of time. So is, right. And so is that essentially being addressed and if you've had COVID in the past 90 days, then you don't have to exclude?
So if you've had COVID in the last 90 days and you're asymptomatic, then you also would not have to exclude?
Okay.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the adjusted certified employee salary schedule presented by Superintendent McManus and our Chief Finance Officer Andrea Gillis.
So before we jump on this topic, I just have to say to remember all of those, the guidance that continuously changes. That is exactly why all the questions go to Katie. So thank you, Katie. Because it's, it's, there are so many changes. I'm not sure how anybody would keep up with all of that. But thank you to all those people that are monitoring it and helping with that. So good evening, members of the board, and thank you for your time this evening. And, and thank you to everyone who came tonight to talk on this topic. I can promise you on December 14th, I did not think I would be standing up here talking about a, a, the topic of certified supplements. Because on December 14th, we all left the meeting celebrating, as did all of our certified, our teachers and other certified personnel, who thought after that approval that evening that they were going to be receiving $3,800 a year of an increase. When I think about that, what that means and it, that's, that can be over $300 a month for a person, which is, which is life-changing in many cases, as you heard many people talk about this evening. As I talk about with my family all the time, having siblings that are still in the classroom, haven't seen raises in five years, you know, without two people in the household, you cannot make ends meet. I, I understand that is all very, very true and is a reality in our profession. And it saddened me, it saddens me to he, to, to continue to know that, to hear that and to have salaries of our educators not addressed where, where they need to be addressed. And that is through, through state dollars, through, through funding that is ongoing and reoccurring. It's great to have funds where you can do bonuses. And I know bonuses are a whole different animal when it comes to being taxed and, and all of that. But it seems like bonuses were the way that when we got ESER, we were like, yes, finally we can recognize some of our employees because the other money is, is, is limited. And it's, it is very disheartening to our educators and I know that. And so yes, when, to make the call the night that I did was horrible for, it's horrible for the people that had to receive it. And that's what I feel so badly about. Because I do care about our employees. I care about our teachers. I care about all of our employees. And they are not paid adequately and they are not paid what they deserve for the countless hours they work. And especially, you know, what, what was the worst part about it is that this was a, a little bit of a, of a bright light in a year that has been the most challenging year for our educators in the history, I believe. I mean, it, it has been a challenging year and I hear it from our teachers here and our classified employees. But I also hear it from my own family and many educators I know in other places. And so to stand before you and even suggest that we dim that light is, is something I absolutely really have no desire to do this evening. I, I don't want to dim that light. But I've also been told, you know, that as, as the person oversees money, make sure that whatever money, not, I don't oversee it, but I, I oversee it because I oversee the entire budget, but you know what I mean? I wasn't taking away any, any other roles. But that you have to make sure that whatever you put into a salary is reoccurring and that you can do that every year. And so when we think about funding sources like Fund Balance and we think about funding sources, other funding sources that are not reoccurring, that it is out of the question to pay something and then ever take it back. And so what we've been doing is looking in the last week, you know, what money can we actually right now find that is reoccurring? That for no doubt, we can pay those, we can pay that every single year. And that's what you're going to see in tonight's presentation. But I also want, you know, you to know that do I believe we can look at all funding sources, take a deep dive into it and figure this out for our teachers and our educators? Yes, I absolutely believe that. Coming tonight was what do we know we have now? But I can promise you that I know we can, we can find it. And that was my first reaction when I heard about what happened is that we got to figure this out. And so I, I, what I, what we're going to share tonight with you shows us sources that are definitely reoccurring. And again, but that also then takes what someone was counting on and giving them more money through bonuses. And again, I know I've heard from a lot of folks that that is not a good answer, bonuses, I know that. But I got to give as many bonuses, we got to give as many bonuses as we can to our employees. I mean, you know, other professions do great things, get bonuses and they're way higher, they're way higher. I mean, corporate America gives amazing bonuses, but whatever we can give in bonuses, we'll keep giving. And we'll keep giving as long as we have federal dollars. And even if we can get to the $3,800, we still want to give the bonuses. Because I mean, at the end of the day, that bonus can do something that it's more than someone had before. And so I want to keep doing that. In tonight's presentation, I hope that this is only the beginning. Not I hope, I'm going to, to promise you, I'm going to promise our educators, it's the beginning of the step we need to make to move in the right direction for our educators. And I want to be that district. I want to be the district that despite of the lack of funding and appreciation from our state, that we are able to, to do things different in our district. And it's not, the other thing I've heard from our educators, money is very important and it is, it is, they need to make a living wage. And honestly, a single mom with children that has to work three jobs is, is a travesty. And it is just unacceptable. And honestly, I, I can't believe that I stand up here in 20, you know, 20, what year, I don't even know what year, 2022, 2022, and we're still talking about this and we haven't evolved at all. And actually it's gotten worse. And so what I can commit to our teachers is that besides working like crazy to find funds, and not only our teachers, our classified employees that, that honestly, $13 an hour, how, that awful. To, to work night and day to find, to, to, to do things different here. But in addition to the money, to actually listen to the voices of our educators for the other ways that we can actually value, show value to them by not taking away resources they need, by not adding layers and layers of micromanaging, you know. So those, those are all things that my team and I are committed to doing. We, we, I, I know that sometimes it doesn't appear like that, especially when this happened, that are we valued? But I can promise you here, we will show it and we will do everything in our power and, and, and night and day to build back the trust that we've lost. And I can promise you that because I also know that it takes way more deposits in all of your emotional bank accounts than it, when, of withdrawal like this is going to take so many more. And don't think that I don't know that because I know that. And so tonight you're going to see a presentation that shows what we know we have that is sustainable year after year. But it is not, I, I, I'm going to just be completely honest. I would like to, to pay the full amount of the $3,800 that we promised because we are all only as good as our word and that night, that was our word. And so I, I, if we move forward tonight, we will hit the pavement and figure out how to make that 38 a reality. I hope tonight I bring Andrea up, Mrs. Gillis, she's going to show details to everyone. And I know that, you know, Mr. Daniel, I know you had some facts and figures. I, I do believe that Andrea's presentation will address those. And if, and if not, meeting at, at the end of the meeting will be completely acceptable and, and she's more than willing to do that. So with that, I'm going to bring up Mrs. Gillis.
Thank you. So before we get into the presentation, I just wanted to talk, give some, a little bit of context of how the mistake happened. So we received the state's salary schedules in early December and staff had about a week to prepare the salary schedules to be ready for the December 14th meeting. We are by no means making excuses and we're just trying to paint the picture. Typically we would have much longer to get this, get this information earlier and have much longer to prepare the salary schedules. However, staff was eager to get the information out and get new salary schedules approved so that we could provide a certified, our certified staff the wages that they so deeply reserve, deserve. Unfortunately, in our haste, we used a formula to calculate the amount that was incorrect. And when the spreadsheet was reviewed, the amount represented on the spreadsheet equated to the amount that was available in the budget, which was $5.4 million. So once the error was discovered, we did what was fiscally responsible. We are truly sorry, and I mean truly sorry. I mean, I literally hit the floor when I found out that this error was made and I was, I was devastated. We are truly sorry and we have worked very hard over the, over these last couple of weeks to close the gap. You will see this present, you will see in this presentation, a schedule of already approved bonuses as well as newly proposed bonuses that we will bring forward for approval. Although these bonuses do not make up for the difference, we hope that it shows how much we appreciate all of our classified and, I mean certified and classified staff. The reset, the revised schedule that you, that you will see tonight is not as high as previously presented, but it is sustainable, given the local funds that we have available. I would like to stress that it is important that we look to the future. We look to a future that may not include all the federal ESER funds that we have and that we make sure that we do something that is sustainable. So now we'll go into the presentation. So on December 14th, we approved the salary schedules with an increase for our certified employees. Before the schedule was implemented and executed, executed, an error of the original calculation was discovered and the amount approved was $16 million over what was budgeted. The approved schedule would have provided an annual average increase in the supplement of $3,861 for the average teacher. The beginning teacher total annual supplement would have started out at 82, at $8,200, meaning the first year teacher would have got $8,200 in total supplement as compared to the prior year of $4,600. We are presenting a revised certified schedule tonight that reflects a supplement amount that corrects the miscalculation amount and is fiscally responsible. So how, I want to talk about now how the calculation happened, the miscalculation happened. So finance provided our compensation staff with a $5.4 million budget to allocate to teachers and a local supplement increase. And this, this, this amount of 5.4 was funded with the Article 46, Article 46 sales tax revenue. The actual amount of the increase over last year was 6.5, but by law we have to carve out charter schools proportionate share and their proportionate share of Article 46 revenue was 1.1 million. So the original calculation of the formula, it, we multiplied the number of employees at each pay grade on the schedule by the new monthly proposed supplement amount. The total cost on the spreadsheet, including benefits, equated to 5.4. However, the correct formula should have been that we multiply the number of employees at each pay grade on the schedule by the increase in the annual amount of the supplement, meaning the new proposed monthly amount less the old proposed monthly amount to get the actual change in the supplement amount. And then multiply that times 10 to annualize it. The total cost had this been calculated correctly would have been 21.4 million. And had we caught it prior to that, And had we caught it prior to that, we would not have brought forth the amount that we brought forward. It would have been a lot lower. So what are we doing now to mitigate an error like this again? So right now, we are, we're going to provide additional training to staff on how to review for accuracy. All compensation estimates, district-wide and individual ones, like just for someone's individual pay increase, must have two HR staff to review for accuracy. All district-wide estimations must also be reviewed by two members of the finance team. And we will use multiple methods of calculating formulas from here on out. So what, what are we bringing forward tonight is a revised certified supplement schedule. The teacher, the teacher annual increase supplement would be eighteen hundred per teacher. All teachers would get an eighteen hundred dollar, teachers and certified staff, I'm sorry, we get an eighteen hundred dollar increase. A beginning teacher on the A zero step would be, a total salary supplement of sixty-four hundred dollars as compared to forty-six hundred dollars previously. Our beginning teacher supplement will be the highest of the larger four districts in the state. So we will have the, the highest beginning teacher supplement. The increase in, the cost of this increase is approximately ten million dollars, and will be funded as follows. We will use the five, we will use five point six million from Article forty-six, which funds a thousand dollars of the eighteen hundred. It's a little bit higher than the five point four because we, our charter school enrollment is a little bit, is, is lower than we projected. Now that we have our bills coming in, we're able to increase that by a couple hundred thousand. We're also going to use the two point two million from the county of the three million that Mr. Daniels referred to that we got in one-time money this year is going to be ongoing next year. We're going to use two point two of the three million to also help with the shortfall. The balance will be achieved through utilization of other permanent funding sources. This ten million dollar allocation is sustainable based on our current funding levels. Now I want to go over the history of local supplement, and I just use the beginning teacher's salary because they are our lowest paid teachers. Other teachers with experience who have master's degrees and or other advanced degrees are higher on this, you know, make more money. But our beginning teachers are, A zero zero teachers are our lowest teachers, our lowest paid teachers. So in fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen, the supplement was two thousand six hundred dollars annually or two sixty a month. That was what it was prior to the Article forty-six sales tax being passed. And actually, that wasn't passed until twenty nineteen twenty. So the first year, the county funded a seven hundred fifteen dollar increase per teacher with a temporary increase in property taxes. And so the next year, after Article forty-six passed, we received eleven million in county funds for Article forty-six sales tax revenue. So we were able to increase the supplement another twelve hundred eighty-five dollars per teacher. So those two amounts together were two thousand dollars over the two-year period. Then after this fiscal year, we received another six point five million dollars in Article forty-six sales tax revenue, which we had to carve out a piece for the charter school. So we had five point six available. And we are proposing now to increase the supplement eighteen hundred dollars for the fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two. Next, we'll talk about the bonuses. We have, I broke it out into district-funded bonuses as well as state-funded bonuses, and broke it out between certified staff as well as other staff. So we already have an ESER-funded bonus that we paid out in October of one thousand dollars. We also paid out a holiday funded bonus with local funds in December. Teachers and certified staff received seven hundred, other staff received five hundred. The seven hundred was funded by the one-time money we received from the county that Mr. Daniels alluded to that we got this year, the six point five million we got this year. We funded the holiday bonus with that. And we also, if you look down a little bit further in May, there's going to be another seven hundred dollar bonus that's going to be funded with that, those funds as well. So we split it, we split it in two buckets. And this was prior to us learning of all the ESER stuff. I mean, all the, of, of approving all the ESER bonuses. So coming up, and, and these two are asterisks with, because we haven't gotten approved from DPI yet, but pending approval from DPI, in February, we will bring forth another bonus of fifteen hundred dollars. And then in April, we will do another fifteen hundred dollars. So there's going to be three thousand dollars in newly approved bonuses out of ESER. The state also provided some bonuses with their budget being approved back in November. So there was a state-funded premium bonus of one thousand dollars, which we paid out in December. All cert, all employees making less than seventy-five thousand, certified and other, will get five hundred dollars in additional bonus this month. Teachers will also get three hundred dollars bonus from the state. And then there's a state-funded COVID training teacher bonus of one thousand dollars, of which would, would go to all of our teachers because all of you have had some kind of training for COVID, be it learning loss, prevention, and such. So these are all the bonuses that will be paid out this fiscal year. I just want to make a note too at the bottom that all these bonuses are for eligible permanent employees. And the bonuses for, and then the other, the ESER bonuses are for permanent eligible employees, and is pending approval from the Board of Education and DPI. Unfortunately, bonuses are taxed at the bonus rate, and they're not eligible for retirement. However, if you are, just, just, just a point, just a note, if you are under the bonus tax rate, which is about thirty-five point sixty-five percent, with you include FICA, the state, and the, and the federal taxes. If you are under that effective tax rate, when you, when you file for your tax returns in the, in the next year, that money will come back to you in a refund. And I know that's not, you don't get it in your pocket right now, but we are, you know, we are bound by the IRS to, to, to pay taxes on bonuses, unfortunately. So my recommendation tonight is that we approve the revised certified salary schedules as presented. And like Mrs. McManus said, any funding that we find in the future, we will be putting towards the supplement to make sure that we can fulfill our promise.
Thank you.
Board member Bohannon?
Thank you, Ms. Gillis.
All teachers get eighteen hundred. All teachers get eighteen hundred. The beginning teacher, so I think there's some confusion. The beginning, beginning teachers are getting eighteen hundred too. It's just that, that, it's just that there, everybody's supplement goes up, let me pull the schedule up.
You know what she wanted to show, like when we asked today about should we, if we showed a veteran, and you said there's so many bonuses with all the.
Kevin, can you pull the salary schedule, schedule up for me? The, not, it's on the, it's on item B. Yes, yes, that's it. So when I, when I say sixty-four hundred, that's the six forty a month times ten. So that's what a beginning teacher with a bachelor's degree will make. Veteran teachers make more. As you see, the, the amount gets higher as you get more years of experience. Okay. Right. But, okay, the flat, the flat amount is, is, if you, is the state, the state, the state pay. Your state pay does stay the same from year fourteen through twenty-four, right. The supplement does change. It, it, there's a small, it's small, but there's, there's, but we are going to address veteran teachers when we, whenever we get additional funding. We will address veteran teachers.
Please, please let our speaker talk. Thank you.
So when we get additional funding, and there is some, some state funding that is going to be available soon, we will address veteran teachers. Yeah, we had already planned to do that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, questions from the board?
Yes.
Board member Bohannon?
Thank you. So Ms. Gillis, I want to go back to the error itself. So when, could you, I just, I want to make sure that we're, we're clear. So the way it normally works is the state passes the budget. So this year, the budget was passed, I believe, November eighteenth, around there. We receive the budget DPI processes, and they do the salary schedules, and then they send them to us. We receive those at the beginning of December. And then your, your staff goes through and figures out sort of what the amount is for the supplement. And then our compensation staff and HR has to take that amount and then incorporate that into the state's schedule or come up with our salary schedules as a district, right?
Yes, we knew that we had a six point five million dollar quarter sales tax increase that was supposed to be used for certified supplements. Like I said, one point one had to be withheld for charter schools. So we had five point four million available. That was the budget that was provided in order to calculate an increase for all staff at all levels, all certified staff at all levels.
Okay. And so I think where, first and foremost, I, I want to thank you because you're the one who discovered the error. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Because I know that, you know, as a board member, I remember, I looked at the number at the board meeting, and I remember thinking that it was very high. But I think I, like everyone else, was just excited that we were able to do that. But in the way that the schedules looked, it, to me, was difficult to see the total discrepancy. And so I, I think that now that we sort of understand the context, it makes a little bit more sense to me. I did want to also ask about, are we, you just mentioned we're waiting on some additional money from the state?
Yes, the state is giving districts who have a lower tax base additional funds for supplements for teachers. They haven't given us any guidance yet on how that money will be, will have to be allocated. I think that they may, they leave it up to us. We're going to address veteran teachers.
Okay.
I mean, on the call today, we had, they said it's going to be up to us to figure it out because they don't really know our, they don't really know our salary schedules. Each individual district has, has different supplement schedules. Some of them don't have supplements at all. Some of them do supplements once a year and pay it on a lump sum, and some of them have significantly higher supplements because they're in a area that has a larger tax base.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from our board? Yes, board member Jones?
So I just wanted to say that I'm so proud right now to be an educator, like many of you. I work two jobs. And the reason why I actually ran for school board is because I felt like you, and I wanted to do something about it. Of course, I can't work in Winston-Salem Forsyth County and serve on the board. So then I had to go to another district, but because I'm from here, I felt compelled to do this type of service. And I definitely see where Jenny Easter is coming from when she said we need to have representation from our profession here. It is essential. My voice is a little different from the other board members, not because it's better, but because it reflects where the road and the rubber meets with our feet to teach and to teach and to teach, and not to be compensated effectively. We should be some of the highest paid professionals in this country, period. Show me the money, exactly. Thank you, Tripp. Show me the money. And I want us as a community to work together to not only challenge this school board to figure it out, but to cha, challenge the county officials, the city officials, the state officials. We got to now hold each other's hand and go to every municipality in this community, knock the door down, pay our teachers the money. I do want to thank you all so much for coming with grace and mercy and love because it made what we had to do tonight that much more bearable. Because we stand before you humbled. Andrea Gillis stand before you tonight as one of the best CFOs in this state, in this country. And we fully support her professionalism and her desire to make our school district a better place. So I just want to really appeal to you as the people who teach our children, so you know we all got hearts, to continue to have patience as we try to work through this process. But I definitely stand with you committed in this community, whether I'm on this board or not, to fight for teacher educator compensation. Thank you.
I, I hesitate to ask this because I'm not looking to assign blame, but I truly want to understand. Where does, you know, I, I kind of assume that compensation is in the finance department. Is that correct?
No, it's in HR.
It's in HR. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, board member Jones?
Sure. So I, I just had a few questions to kind of clarify because I think we all want to make sure, again, we, we understand like county funds. But before that, yeah, I, I just wanted to, so we have a room full of educators to, you know, to personally say that I am sorry the mistake was made. And, you know, you've all brought up how a lot of times we ask a lot of questions around things. And, and as board member Bohannon said, I, I, I believe we all, I think, board member Crowley and I talked about, man, those, those are some, some, some large numbers. But at the same time, knowing how you all really worked hard to get the quarter cent sales tax passed and how the community really embraced it, and it, and, I mean, you know, and it passed, and the commissioners were behind it. And, and, you know, we were, that, that night was very exciting for a unanimous vote to make sure that we could, that we could do that. And also knowing that staff receiving the information so, you know, quickly, and then trying to get that calculated and it turned around with an antiquated, I mean, an antiquated accounting system to then have to try to get it out to, to everybody to get paid in, in January. So, you know, I, I think we, we all are, are sorry that happened. When we talk about some of the numbers coming from, from the county for the local supplement, the, the quarter cent sales tax was earmarked to directly go to certified employees. And so, and, and right now, we are paying out every dime of that that we receive. We're not holding anything back. But that also means, and I'm, I'm just saying so that we all understand this, that means if, if the, if sales tax revenue from the county were to dip at all, then what we are already saying in this thousand dollars would change. Moving forward, if we're talking about sustainability.
Right, sustainability.
And what, and what I'm trying to say is that that is definitely, to come in to the, what, what we have right now. But I think when, when you were talking about trying to increase that, it also to find ways that we can set aside some money to where, when that dips down some, that we don't change anyone's salary and that we can fill in those gaps. And so as, as we're moving forward, whether that's going back to the county and saying, hey, in our funding formula, can you put that in? I, I'm just saying, as, as we're doing that deep dive, and you're taking the next six months to the year to look at that because that's bothered, that's bothered me from the beginning to say, we haven't, we're, we're paying out every dime we get, and that's not in our control. But if it goes down, that's not a time that you also want to look at them and, you know, anyone and say, I, I, you know, we're back, we'd find ourselves back in the same situation that we're in now. The other piece to that is out of the, the, Andrew, you talked about the, the, the extra dollars that we're taking. We're taking the two point two million from the local. Explain to us, we, we talked about, we, we received it now, and that that's going to be part of our ongoing. How do we know that and what conversations been had with the county about that?
Well, when we found out we were getting the additional revenue of three, I think it was three point two or three point three million dollars, we were told by the county that this would be built into our base budget beginning next year. So our base would be, would have that three point three million dollars added into it when we start the new fiscal year next year. And I think, I do believe that's in the county document as well, the county budget document.
Board member Parker?
Okay, and, and just to clarify again, so that would be put into our budget every year, not to be taken out, not fluctuating any of that.
Yes. I just want to make a note that county funds are our most flexible part of money that we have. And yes, we hope that our county funds do not go down. But that is the risk that every LEA in the state of Nokana is dealing with. Because if the county, county revenues fall and they, and they, you know, cut education, I mean, that's what happens. They, they cut our, they cut our allotments. I mean, it happened in two thousand eight when the recession hit. I mean, everybody, everybody took, everybody had to make severe drastic cuts in their, in their local budgets because the, the revenue just wasn't there. So that is a risk that every LEA takes every year when they allocate all of their funds out to pay, you know, all the expenses that they have in the district. And I mean, our budget is six hundred million dollars normally. This year it's a little higher because we have all the ESER money. This year it's a little higher because we have all the ESR money. So, but of that, of that budget, prior to ESR, you know, our budget was 85% salaries and benefits. That's, I mean, we spent 85% of our total budget on people. So, I mean, we don't have a lot of flexibility in our budget that's outside of people. But we are, like Mr. Manon says, going to do a deep dive into our budgets this year and look and see where we can have efficiencies. We're going to look at all of our funding sources and see where we have money.
And so, to, to go a step further with that, so we should continue to advocate
Yes.
from our commissioners to give that money each year and then put it into our, to guarantee that it will be in our budget and that it will go toward teacher supplements, correct? That, that is our next, that is something that we as a board, everybody in our whole county, I hope, would advocate because, you know, these folks sitting here are the most important people in our county, and they make or break our economy, everything.
Right.
And so, you know, I, I think we need to do it. I have a couple more questions. So, we, we talked about the ranking for our beginning teachers in, in, with the other four districts. How about our veteran teachers? Where will they, where will they rank?
Well, not at the bottom because I think right now our average is, I think we're number... And I don't have the, the exact dollar amount, but I can, I can get that for you, where we are on the average. Because DPI, DPI puts out average supplement.
Board member Berman?
So, I think right now we were number nine for, for average supplements, but the, the DPI puts it out on the average. It's kind of hard to say where we are versus other districts because they have different salary schedules. And I mean, we have 18 salary schedules ourselves, and so they pay different amounts on different salary schedules. But right now, I think the average supplement, when they look at the overall average, I think we were number nine.
Okay.
Oh, it was eight? For teachers? Oh, yeah, maybe it is eight, yeah, maybe it is eight. But the new data, the new data has not come out yet of where we are now with our increase that we did last year. So, once that comes out, I will bring that information back to the board to let you know where we are. And then, and then once, and once we increase our, you know, once we, this, this $1,800 increase approved, I will calculate that and see where we are with that as well.
I think that would be, be good because I think we need to make sure that we, that we retain as well as recruit, and I, you know, that's what we, we just need to be, be true to our veteran teachers. And too, which brings me to my next point. Our retired teachers, and I don't know, Kevin, if you can do that, all the money that's coming in January, and I think I heard you say, which I think we as board members did not understand the first time we heard this said way back in the fall, that permanent employees would, would get that bonus. What I think, I know I, as a board member, did not understand is that retired, retired teachers who have come back to help us out in the district to teach again did not receive that bonus. And, and we, as a board, you know, did not, did not know that, and we haven't backfilled that. And so now I'm, I'm getting real concerned because I was, we were told that that was state bonuses, and now I'm getting concerned, I'm seeing a lot of nice money coming in in January. And I think I heard that same verbiage, permanent employees only, which would not... And, and I'm not talking about retirees who come back and teach, you know, a few, one day a week or something. I'm talking about people that are in the classroom every single day, just like a regular teacher.
Okay, um, we can, we can, we can, we have not done our application for the ESR bonus yet, so we can address that in our, in our ESR application to say we want to pay it to all employees who are in a permanent role, because that's a permanent role. So we can just change the verbiage to say a permanent role.
Yes.
And so, we did go back after the board's meeting, meeting in December, and we did pay out the teachers, the retired teachers that are in a permanent role. We did give them a thousand dollar bonus in December.
So we did do that.
We did do that, yes.
Thank you.
And we will, we will, we will change our, our language in the application for the ESR bonus to say employees in a permanent role, whether they are permanently, permanent employees or retirees.
Okay, thank you.
As long as they're in a permanent role.
Yeah, those folks have come back to help us out in times whenever we desperately, we most desperately need them, and so I, I want to make sure they're compensated for that. So, now, my final question, and I will... There's... Is there any way that we can, with money that is coming through bonuses or anything like that, that we can, not take away from bonuses, but is there any monies that we can backfill, so to speak, for lack of a better term, to start to stuff the, the money bags for a future, for future money to go into the supplement, other than just making sure that we hound the county for that money?
I'm not really understanding the question.
I guess, I guess I'm, I'm asking if there's any, any extra money coming in from anything that we can put forth to make sure we start now putting that toward a supplement amount for teachers? That would be sustainable.
Well, I think all of, I think all of the sustainable money that we have, we have put toward this 1,800. We do, you know, obviously, everybody knows we have all this ESR money, but the ESR money, if we worked, one of our options, I mean, one of our thoughts was just to go ahead and pay it out of ESR. But if we did that, we would be coming in two years saying, ESR's gone, we got to reduce your salary by $2,000. And that's what I didn't, we didn't, we just didn't want to do that.
Yeah, no, no, we definitely do not want to do that, I think. Unfortunately, that's kind of what happened to the state health plan, I think, so.
Right.
Anyway, so we've seen where that goes, so, okay, I think I'm finished, thank you very much.
Okay, board member Crowley?
Yeah, I, I wanted to explore the option of reimbursement so that teachers would get 100% of the money. I know a lot of them spend out of pocket on things. Is there something we can do through ESR where they get reimbursed? Like if they just produce the receipts, they're up to a certain amount, you know, up to $1,000 or whatever? And it could be for either supplies that they're using for their classroom or their mental health. So it could be anything that they're spending on themselves.
That will be something we can look into, is, would be hard to manage. But we, like, we, I personally, I don't want teachers to go and out and spend their own personal money. I would like for them to go ask their principal, say, here's what I need, and the principal gets that information together, comes to us and say, I need more money. We did allocate more instructional supply money this year than we did last year. We, we increased our allotment for instructional supplies this year. But if there's anything that schools need and the teachers need that they, they're having to go buy out of their pocket, they need to let the principal know, this is what I need, and then gather those, you know, those expenses together, those costs together, and have the principals come forward to, you know, to the board and to staff and say, we need, our teachers need these things.
Well, then what about just for their mental health? Whether it's a Y membership or a manicure?
Well, I don't, I don't think, I don't think.
Whatever, whatever they need to take care of themselves.
It, it has to be something that, that will be approved by, you know, with, with federal dollars, and I don't know if that would be approved by, with federal dollars.
I would like us to look into that because I do think that's a way that they can get the maximum amount of money tax, you know, just like you get reimbursed for your expenses. We're saying their social, emotional health is important, this would put money toward that, and...
We can look into it with, with our ESR funds.
And then the other thing that's out of our control, but actually in each one of our control, is the sales tax. So if you buy locally, you are supporting, I mean, that number fluctuates every year. So it could be 14 million, 17 million, it could be 27 million, depending on how much we support our local businesses. And that's, you know, buying Forsyth County and you're going to be supporting a teacher.
Board member Bohannon?
Thank you. I just, as I'm sort of listening to conversations and then processing, it, it just occurs to me that any time, any time a problem happens, my default is to sort of look at the systemic issues. And we're having lots of conversations relative to the supplement, relative to sort of what we can do with ESR dollars. And this has been a conversation, I think, that, you know, we've been having for quite some time. Even, I'll be graduated from high school 10 years this year, and even when I was a student, there were these issues about, like, the state just not doing what it's supposed to be doing. And then us having to, as a board, as a district, having to figure out a way to piecemeal our way to trying to make people whole. And I guess, one of the things that frustrates me is that public schools are the only entity, in, in, in my view, where every single aspect of our budget is controlled by another entity. Our budget is given to us every year by three entities, the federal government, the state government, and our local commission. And we can, we, we beg and we ask and we advocate for increases. We know how underpaid so many of our positions are. And I think what, what frustrates me is that we can do every single thing possible with what we have locally, and it still will not bridge the gap between the state's degradation of its responsibility to teachers and to staff in public school systems. You know, I, I know that I, I've had some conversations with my colleagues about, as a board, you know, about how we need to increase our level of advocacy on behalf of our staff because it seems to me that we can, we can do a whole lot, there are things that we can do, but in order to really get where we need to be, the state is going to have to stop ignoring the needs and stop systemically, to me, under-resourcing our public education system. Even the profession itself, college education departments are dilapid, like, nobody's going to school to be a teacher. And on the back end, that to me is, I, it, it's just hard for me to even see forward without, to me, an overarching systemic just change in how the state is funding public education.
I agree. When I, when we finally did receive our state salary schedules, and I probably will, you know, get some heat for saying this publicly, but I was floored when I saw that the state only gave the teachers on their, a 2.5% increase, including the step, after the years we've had with COVID. That was a slap in the face to teachers, it really was. And we didn't get a budget for two years, so that means you didn't get it, you only got the step increase, there was no raise. And then when you finally do get a new budget, they raise it 2.5%, including the step. So that was a slap in the face of teachers, and we, and probably one of the things that was, you know, contributed to us making this error that we were trying to do what we could. And when we saw, you know, when, when the, this calculation was done, we were so excited. We said, here we go, we can get, we can help get teachers where they need to be. But unfortunately, there was an error in the formula. But I, I, I hope that you all come to our budget meetings that we have when we talk about our budget, and come to the commission meetings when we go present our budget. They have them in the daytime, unfortunately, but, um, it, come to the meetings and advocate, and advocate for the teachers. I, I know, I know, I mean, but they, they had their meetings in the daytime, that's when they have them, that's when we present, unfortunately. Maybe, maybe we present, we make it a day that, make it a, a, a remote learning day, I don't know. But we, we want you to, we want you to come and advocate for, for, for the rest of your, for the rest of your colleagues. We need you to do that. We need you to go to the state, I mean, I've done it before, but we, I mean, everybody needs to go to the state. Because this, the, the salary schedule has not changed significantly since I've been in education, doing this work that I've been doing for 20 years. Like, when I started in 2000, the beginning of the salary on the state side was like 30,000. Now it's 35, 46 over a 20-year period. So that's, that's, that's ridiculous. So I really feel, I mean, I'm with you guys, I'm here to support you. I only can do what I can do with the funds we have available, but I will promise you, as a budget person, which is my specialty because that's where I came from, I will do everything I can and squeeze every nickel out of this budget that we can to help get our classified, our certified and unclassified salaries up to where they need to be. But I can't do it without your help because I need you to advocate to get more money because we have to get more money to do that.
And I will say, lastly, because I'm, I, I want you all to be aware, we are planning a legislative conversation with the Forsyth County delegation in March, and we need to brainstorm with the smartest people in our community educators to figure out how to leverage that conversation when they, exactly, when they, when, when we have that conversation and I'll allow our superintendent to kind of, you know, provide some instruction on how we can all come together to make that a very meaningful conversation around this issue.
Thank you, board member Parker?
Yeah, and just to say, I sit up here with gray hair, I started teaching in 1978 in Tennessee. And I moved here and thought I had died and gone to heaven because North Carolina was the teacher and the roads, education and the road state. And I was so excited coming here, I got more money, I had a teacher's aid, I had all kinds of things that I did not have in the state of Tennessee. And now, unfortunately, because of exactly what we've talked about tonight, we're in the position that we are, and I'd probably need to go back to Tennessee now to have the level of support and, and money that I have. So we need to, to go back and request and demand that we become the education state again because we used to be, and we need to be again.
Yes. Any more questions? I'm not seeing any on virtual, can't see anything because of the screen. Andrea, Lita, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you so much for your tireless.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I, I have a question.
Okay, board member Calvert-Hayes?
Are you, are you ready for my question?
I am, thank you. Board member Calvert-Hayes?
Okay.
Okay.
Somebody's talking.
I'm not sure what.
Am I okay to talk? My, my phone's really acting crazy. Yes, Lina, she said, could I had a talk? Okay, thank you. You know, as, as bad, as bad as this may seem, I, I think that maybe it's a wake-up call for all of us. And I think that us going through this and figuring this out the way that we have, and especially for our teachers, I think that this is probably, like I said, as bad as it...
Board member Calvert-Hayes, we can't hear you.
To our kids.
Okay, we can hear you now.
And I think this is only going to pull us all together closer and make us all work together and realize the advantage we have in Forsyth County, working, working with our teachers.
Thank you, board member Berman? Board member Berman, do you have anything to add?
No, I, I am satisfied with the answers that were given, and I look forward to the finance meeting in two weeks.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you so much, and, and I think you're up next with the discussion of the compensation schedules for the classified, hourly, coaching, and other employees.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, now that we have gotten the certified salary schedules discussion over, now we're going to talk about classified. So we had to, you know, we had the certified done prior to because we wanted to make sure we got that out. But now we're, we spent the holiday working on the classified and the hourly coaching and other employees' schedules. So, the following salary schedules and/or pay plans are being presented for approval tonight. So we have the classified pay schedule, the hourly pay schedule, the occupational and physical therapist pay schedule, because they are also considered classified, the administrative pay plan, the coaching supplement schedule, and the miscellaneous pay schedule. So, the changes to the, to the pay schedules are as follows. So the state approved the salary increase for all classified and central office permanent employees, and this approved increase is the greater of 2.5% or $13 per hour minimum. So this increase requires changes to the following schedules, the cert, the classified pay schedule, the hourly pay schedule, and the occupational and physical therapist pay schedules. The following schedules did not change. The administrative play plan, still the same, however, those employees will receive a 2.5% increase on their current salary, but we did not change the pay plan. The coaching supplement schedule also did not change, however, coaches... The coaching supplement schedule also did not change, however, coaches will move up one step on the supplement. The miscellaneous pay schedule did not change, the only change on that really was we separated out the, the subpay, which is now on its separate schedule, and that was approved at the previous board meeting. So, most permanent, um, classified hourly OT and PT and admin staff received a 2.5% increase. Other employees that were on, well under the $13 an hour rate received a higher percentage increase in order to get to the $13 an hour minimum. So the increases ranged from 2.5% to 11.5%. So the people who got, who were above 13 got 2.5. Anyone who was below 13, um, received more to get them to 13. I can, I want to put up the schedules now, the ones that did change, so we can show those. Kevin, could you pull up for me the, um, it's in, yeah, item C. I want to pull up the classified, the hourly, and the OTPT schedules because those are the only ones that changed. The other ones remain the same, other than the date change. So here's the hourly pay schedule, as you can see, the $13 hour minimum is there for pay grades 50, 51, and 52. And this is, this is, this ties to the DPI salary schedules that are posted on their website. We aligned our salary schedules with DPI. Then we have the classified pay schedule. Oh, OT, we can do OTPT, whichever one you have. So here's the OTPT schedule. We, last year brought to the board an OTPT schedule because we, um, DPI had recommended that we put them on the schedule. They're not considered certified, they are considered classified, but because of the level of education that they have to have for their, um, to, to, to hold these jobs and these licenses, um, we had to put them on a, a, a stepping grade schedule. So this is that, this is that schedule, this is the new schedule for them with the 2.5% increase. And also, we have the classified pay schedules and as you can see, we have our minimum salary, which is 2,254 per month, which is the equivalent of $13 per hour. For people working 215 days and for people working 205 days, it's 2,149 minimum. So this is just, this is just the minimum salary. And people who have experience obviously make more. So those are the salary schedules that did change. So our recommendation tonight is that we approve the classified hourly admin OTPT coaching and miscellaneous schedules as presented.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you, I just wish I could do more.
We all do. The next order of business are the action items. The first one, consider approval of the mask recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Some moved.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second is to consider approval of the adjusted certified employee salary schedule. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
Yes.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, consider approval of the compensation schedule, schedule for classified hourly coaching and others. Is there a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Chair Captain, I need to abstain due to a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries. The next is consider approval of proposed revisions to policy 4122, substitute teacher requirements. Is there a motion to approve?
Can you approve?
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Um, board member Calvert-Hayes, are you, can you, are you in favor or opposed?
Just say yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Uh, the next is to consider approval of the contracts with the School Health Alliance and National Council for Mental Wellbeing. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, consider approval for the CPI contract amendment. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. The announcements, we have Tuesday, January 25th at 4:30, we have the curriculum committee meeting. On Tuesday, January 25th at 5:00 PM, we have the finance committee meeting and on Tuesday, January 25th at 5:30, we have the regular meeting of the board. Before we begin the section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on anything, let me say to our Cable 2 viewers, thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast and at this time, we will open the meeting to those of you who have signed up to comment.